Good morning. Welcome to the 10th inaugural ceremony of the Mayor and City Council of Mobile, Alabama. At this time, please stand for our presentation of colors and remain standing for the invocation by Dr. Mark Foley and the pledge of allegiance led by Annie Jeffrey, Charlie Jeffrey, Sam Jeffrey, Henry Jeffrey, and Jeanie Jeffrey. After the pledge, remain standing for the National Anthem by Angelica Dillon, Director of Coral Activities Williamson High School.
Congratulations to those of you who are newly elected and some positions you're about to take on behalf of the city and the people. Thank you for saying yes to this role. In a moment, I'm going to ask God to bless you and your work. Ask Him to remind you that God is your first responsibility in this role. I want to read something to you presented by a friend of mine this morning. By the way, there are a group of people praying for you right now, every one of you. I asked one of them what he would have me say. He's in the logistics business and he very much wants to see the city thrive, but he really wants to see God represented in this place. Here's his hope for you from the Psalmist of the Proverbs, the Book of Wisdom. "My child, listen to what I say and treasure my commands. Tune yourself, tune your ears to wisdom, and concentrate on understanding. Cry out for insight and ask for understanding. Search for them as you would for silver; seek them like hidden treasures. Then you will understand what it means to fear the Lord, and you will gain the knowledge of the Lord." Let's pray together. Father, I thank you for what you provide in these moments. I thank you and ask your attention to these appointed leaders, to Cory Penn, to William Carroll, to CJ Small, to Ben Reynolds, to Joel Davis, to Scott Jones, to Gina Gregory, and to Sandy Stimson. Lord, may your Spirit rest on each of these people, the Spirit of wisdom and understanding, the Spirit of counsel and strength, the Spirit of knowledge, and the very full awareness of your authority and power. May each of these men and women delight in obeying you. May each judge not by appearance or make decisions based on hearsay, but with justice and fairness, in righteousness and truth, attend the welfare of the people of Mobile. Father, I ask your blessing on this city and on each individual. Thank you for loving us so much, and we ask these things in Christ's name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Just gonna sing it a cappella. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Who's brought stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you. You may be seated. city of Mobile. At this time, we'll begin our swearing-in ceremony. Mayor-elect Sandy Stimson and the Honorable Charles Braddock.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, William San Stimson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
...of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
...of the state of Alabama.
Of the state of Alabama.
So long as I continue...
So long as I continue.
...a citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully.
And honestly...
And honestly.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
...of the office...
Of the office.
...upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear...
I further solemnly swear...
...that I am eligible for the office of Mayor of the city of Mobile.
And I'm eligible for the office of the mayor for the office of the city of Mobile.
And will execute the duties of San.
And I will execute the duties of San.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge. You can take the Bible back, don't you? Okay? Thank you, sir. I'd like to begin with some thanks to begin with. My first thanks go to my wife Jean. You know, I know of no city who has a prettier first lady, nor one who is kinder and sweeter. And so, Jean, thank you for your support, but I also want to thank my children, half of whom are here, half of whom are out of town, and my grandchildren, half of whom are here and half who are out of town. But also, my siblings, who've been very supportive over these last eight years and I know will continue to be supportive. The leadership team at the executive level, the senior level, and everybody, all the city employees that have made the last four years, the last eight years, successful. Campaign volunteers, but most of all, really, the voters who've given me and the new city council an opportunity, which I would think is kind of a generational opportunity where we stand right now today. I also want to thank those who've been praying. All of this has been undergirded by prayer, and for that, I'm tremendously thankful. I want to thank the outgoing city council for the last eight years and all that they've done to serve the city of Mobile and serve their districts. I think that you can, those who are leaving, can do so with a great sense of pride, and those three who are still staying, we have another opportunity to continue on. Also, I'd like to thank the new city council members and tell you that I look forward to serving with you because this truly is a generational opportunity. Mobile is really experiencing a transformation, but it's a team effort. Don't be confused. It's not just the administration, it's the city council, it's the city employees, and it's all the citizens. In the campaign, though, we said it's not done yet, and we're not done yet. We've accomplished a lot, but as I've continued to say, there are unprecedented opportunities during these next four years. The theme for the next four years is going to be uniting Mobile through action to fulfill their original vision of creating One Mobile, a safer, more business, and family-friendly city. Unity. What is unity? I think we all probably have a different definition of it, but I think one of the best that I've read was written by Rick Renner, and it reads, "So what is unity? Unity occurs when people are united in action and in passion for a common cause. Their shared goal is so strong that it removes hostilities, puts away disagreements, and gives previously divided people a reason to take their place alongside each other. When this occurs, different gifts, talents, and anointings come connected together, and the result is an amazing river of divine power that achieves supernatural and accomplishes the impossible." With eight years of experience and input of key stakeholders, my team and I have developed a thousand-day framework for action for the next four years. Tomorrow, we will be releasing the first hundred-day plan to the new city council. Today is day one. Our focus for the next seven years, excuse me, the next four years, will be seven areas. Our focus for the next four years will be in seven areas, and it is to protect Mobile, it is to grow Mobile, it's to hire Mobile, it's to connect Mobile, enjoy Mobile, visit Mobile, and ready Mobile. Often, someone stops me and says, "Mayor, y'all are doing an amazing job." Sometimes, they say, "You are." Well, the "y'all" was correct because, really, as I've said, it's the city council, it is the city employees, it is all of us, all of you who are sitting in this room this morning. Almost every single day, my prayer is that God continue to send the people and the resources to the city of Mobile to transform it into the city He wants it to be in the timeline and manner He wants it done in. What an honor it is to be a part of that. But there's a call to action, and that call to action is, let us unite. If you've been on the sidelines the last four years or the last eight years, it's game on. Let's everybody get to the table. Let's do every single thing we can each and every day to really make this the city where you want your friends and family to be here to help us grow this community and what it can be. It is an honor to be your mayor, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you over the next four years. Thank you.
Play train on the Bible and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Cory Penn.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
And the Constitution of that state of Alabama.
So long as I am a citizen thereof.
So long as I'm a citizen thereof.
And I will faithfully and honestly...
I will faithfully and honestly.
...discharge the duties of the office upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties of the office that I'm about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear...
I further solemnly swear.
...that I am eligible for the office of City Council District One.
I'm eligible for the office of City Council District One.
Of the city of Mobile.
Of the city of Mobile.
And will execute the duties of the same.
And will execute the duties of the same.
According to the best of my knowledge...
According to the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think I'm probably one of the first councils in a long time to have some young kids. I want to first thank God, who is the head of my life, Jesus, my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I always told Him that I will honor Him on any platform, and so I'm excited. The second thing, I want to thank the District One voters. I want to thank every person that voted, every person put a sign, every person that knocked on a door. It was an amazing opportunity to create change here, excuse me, in my district. First, I also want to thank my family, my friends, the supporters. Thank you so much. To my beautiful wife, we met in ninth grade at John Elia Florida Best High School in the world. That's why I'm wearing the orange. It's also located in the great District One. I want to thank my daughter and son for sacrificing and sharing your dad. My daughter said, "Dad, you got another job?" That's my son laughing. Also, I want to thank the Honorable Freddie Stokes. I'm honored to have him here today because, to be honest, guys, sometimes in the community that we come from, we might not see leadership that looks like us. Currently, right now, in the 13 Judicial Circuit Court of Alabama, serving Mobile County, we have no representation of people of color. That's something we need to think about. People should not just be picked because of their color, but they should be picked because they're qualified. We also, we have, we also understand that representation is important. I believe Mobile have a great opportunity to show our state, our country, how to do it the right way. I have only worked in three places in my time. That's Mobile County Public School System, so shout out to the teachers and educators, the Boys and Girls Club of South Alabama, where we serving kids, and Rightway Christendom Church, where I'm one of the pastors on staff. The amazing thing about all those three places I work in, all of them located in District One. I was an educator at Chestang. I'm currently the director at the Boys and Girls Club, and my church is located in the great District One. I grew up in a blended family, so I first would like to thank my, I don't like using this word because sometimes people, you know, when you hear that word, but they call it step, but we don't use the word step. He's my dad. So I want to thank Abraham Brown so much for being there for me. I want to thank my beautiful mom, the MVP, Jada Penn-Brown. I love you so much, Mom. To my dad, Elwood Scott, the greatest campaign manager ever. He knocked on so many doors, it's crazy. I'm so honored to have you as my father. To my siblings, thank you for supporting me. I'm excited to be here because we have a great opportunity to create change. So I'm gonna list five things that I want to see in District One. We're gonna work on faith, family, finance, fitness, and fun. That's what I want to bring to District One. So I want you to imagine. I want you to see District One different. I want you to see without litter. I want you to see crime going down. But see, we can't stop at imagining. We have to move to igniting. We're gonna ignite by creating programs. We're gonna ignite by having representation. We're gonna ignite by doing the best for District One. But we're not gonna stop at igniting. We have to move to inspiring. Inspiring a generation to do the same. Remember, I'm District One, you're District One, we're District One. Thank you for voting Cory Penn for Mobile City Council District One. Have a blessed day.
Raise your right hand as you have and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, William Carroll.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the state of Alabama.
So long as I continue...
So long as I continue.
...a citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly...
And honestly.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
...of the office upon which...
Of the office upon which...
...I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear...
I further solemnly swear.
...that I am eligible...
That I am eligible.
...for the office of...
For the office of...
...City Council District Two.
City Council District Two.
...of the city of Mobile.
Of the city of Mobile.
And I will execute the duties...
And I will execute the duties.
...of the same according to...
Of the same according to.
...the best of my knowledge...
The best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Judge.
While I was sitting over there, I kind of dropped down a few thoughts, but however, it's always hard to follow a pastor and a preacher. I had to do the same thing in my first term when I had to follow Fred Richardson, and we all know how he can blow. First, let me thank God because in my race, there was a divine intervention that got involved with our race. See, I like to tell the story of how our race was going. We were doing great, as I always say, but one night, I was laying in the bed, and the weight of the race was heavy because of everything, and at 2:30, I sat straight up and said, "God, I can't carry this no more. Can't carry it anymore." About 7:00 that morning, the phone started ringing. About 1:00 that afternoon, we had an army behind us. It was one of the most impressive, moving, miracle-type situations I've ever seen in my life. Out of the dust came Reverend McFarland and Sanford Davis, the ministerial alliance, the South, the Sunlight District, Reverend Portis, my mom's pastor at Mount Zion, and many more. Classmates, teammates, even my daughter's basketball team that I used to coach at St. Mary's in the AAU. Before we knew it, we had an army that was monumental. So let me thank all of you as we get started. Then let me thank my wife, Joanne, because many of you don't know, she's behind the scenes a lot. She has a lot to say always about anything. You know, she doesn't let go. My son, who's traveled here from hurricane duty over in Homer, Louisiana, to be here today. My daughter Julia and my daughter Morgan, who's a baby. Some of y'all remember the last few, the last time I stood here, William was this big, Morgan was here, and I was holding, I mean, Julia was here, and I was holding Morgan in my arms. That's been almost 12 years ago, almost to the day. So thank you, guys. It's been a hard road for us as we plow through some of the things that affected us. Now, I gotta set some rules here for my cousin while we get started. When we were kids, being that my mother was heavily involved with politics and we used to do, or they used to do fundraisers and events and things at the house, Lisa and the older girls would be the hostesses. Lisa would lock me upstairs in a room, and my brother and I would break out, and she would tell me, "I'm the boss of you." Well, Lisa, guess what? I'm the boss of you again. My mom, my mom was instrumental in me in politics and being involved in the streets. You know, my wife was with us, but my sister-in-law and my brother stepped up to a point this time that I've never seen. She walked the streets when I thought we couldn't. Thank you. You know, I've never in my life seen a race like the race that we had in District Two this time. You know, Mobile, to be honest, we're at a crossroads in this city to be great. All the things that are happening with hostile Airbus, a new airport, the opportunity for growth, not just for little people, but also minorities, and actually contract ownership as opposed to just being counted as individuals a part of other contracts. That time is here. You know, in the words of President Obama, he said, "It's our moment. It's our time. It's our moment. It's our time." The 2020 census has told us a lot about the city of Mobile. We realize now that our city may or does have a different color. You know, going forward, I am hoping for true transparency and outward research as we re-apportion the city of Mobile and redistrict. Because in the next four months, that should be one of the most important things that we talk about in the 100 days as we get forward because the clock is ticking. The clock is ticking. This is our opportunity to reach out, to engage voters, to engage our districts, to engage our people as we move the city forward so that everybody has true equity and value in the city, not just on a level of, as I say, enhanced opportunity for business, but ownership. This is our time. This is our moment, and I hope that when we talk about God's grace in One Mobile, that we all realize that this city is totally different than what it used to be. Rarely do you hear me talk about my father. My dad died November 15, 1990, almost 30 years ago. My daddy was born June 16, 1920. So when my daddy talked, he talked about a various plethora of things. My daddy lived through Jim Crow, segregation, was in the Navy during the 1940s when Mobile was at its height of population. Most of you don't know that. Most of you don't know that at one point, Mobile was the largest city in the state of Alabama, do you? In the 1940s, Mobile had over 400,000 people in it as we built ships for World War II, which put us at a precipice point. Mobile will see those times again as we grow from without and from within. You know, I am all about growth for the city, but I'm all about fair and equitable ability for everybody within the city. District Two is the most charming, elegant district in the city of Mobile. We have the richest of the rich, the poorest of the poor. We have everything that helps make this city go. Our downtown is thriving, and I'm glad to have been a part of that 18, 16 years ago to actually start that. It's thriving and growing, and we're looking at new things coming every day. So as we move forward, you know, and I always like to close this way, and I'll be brief, because I've got lots to say over the next four years. But as we move forward, there are a lot of things that we are called to do. You know, God says that we should take care of each other, look out for each other, speak up for those that can't speak for themselves, bear each other's burdens, which we plan to do. But most of all, he said, "Love one another." So as we move forward in the city of Mobile and into the next four years together, as a family, together as One Mobile in unity, I'm looking forward to working with all of you. All of my past colleagues, all of my new colleagues, the administration, staff, the city of Mobile, and even more so, being a public servant to the citizens of District Two, but also to the entire city of Mobile. I want to say thank you. I enjoy being a servant to the people, and I really do look forward to working with everyone.
Councilmember-elect CJ Small, Honorable Marcus Fox.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, CJ Small.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I am eligible.
That I am eligible.
For the office of City Council, District Three.
For the office of City Council, District Three.
Of the city of Mobile.
Of the city of Mobile.
And will execute the duties of the same.
And will execute the duties of the same.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations.
First and foremost, giving honor to God, who is the head of my life. Good morning. And a heartfelt thank you to my oldest brother and only brother, LaBaron, and my youngest sister, Valerie, for helping me swear in this morning. And also a heartfelt thank you to all of who are assembled here today of my supporters and family. It is with a humble heart and a servant spirit that I acknowledge all of the love and support of each of you that has shown to me over the past nine years of my tenure serving as District Three Councilman for the city of Mobile. For this, I am truly grateful. A special thank you to the current mayor, Senator Stevenson, and his administration, my former fellow council members, my current fellow council members, to my Small's mortuary family, to all of my volunteers, poll greeters, campaign managers, to my family and friends and my church family, to my wonderful and lovely mother, Irene Small. And especially, especially to the citizens of District Three. Thank you, thank you for your belief in my ability and leadership to represent you for the next four years. As your voices were heard on August 24th, my reelection, re-electing me to the District Three seat of the Mobile City Council was a blessing. And for this, I am grateful. Please rest assured, you have re-elected a leader with a heart for the people. As I stand here today, I am reminded of that great morning on November 20th, 2012, the day I took the oath of office to represent you on the great council. Taking on the responsibilities and duties of a whole new role, I was faced with many fears and challenges of what we call the unknown. Having a strong faith in God, a loving and supportive mother and family, and a praying church family, as well as supporting friends and colleagues, gave me the strength and courage I needed to those unknowns head-on. Now, nine years later, I can truly say we have accomplished much in our city and in our district. At this time, I would like to highlight some of the key accomplishments in District Three. With the help of the city and stakeholders, we was able to revitalize Ann Street and Baltimore Street, two streets that many citizens in District Three never thought that would ever be paved again. We established a Boys and Girls Club in the South DIP area. We established a teen center at the New House Park. We expanded the DIP sales center. We purchased a USA Brookfield property and Malls Water Treatment Plant for the Mobile Bay Recreation Access, but not just for citizens in District Three, but for all citizens in the city of Mobile, for we can have water access to our great bodies of water. There is still much work we must do to advance our city and our district. Therefore, I would like to share with my plans as we look forward to a brighter future in our district. With the purchasing of properties in the Maesville area, we are looking to build more affordable homes. We plan to establish food banks in the Maesville and O'Dell communities, provide more funding for parks and recreation activities, and the opening of the very first police precinct in District Three in January of 2022. And also to work with the administration and colleagues to advance our capital improvement projects. And of course, as my colleagues said, the airport is coming. Yes, the airport is coming. Not only that the airport is coming, but new businesses will follow the airport. There will be great news in the Dolphin Island Parkway area and also in District Three. As we work to continue to move our District Four, even in the midst of this global pandemic, a time of many uncertainties, fears, and challenges, I am often inspired by the famous words of our former President Barack Obama. "We must choose hope over fear. We see the future not as something out of control, but as something we can shape for the better through concentrated and collective efforts." So my fellow citizens, together, we must continue to pave the way for a better District Three and a better Mobile. Let's get to work. We got plenty of work to do. Thank you.
Councilmember-elect Ben Reynolds and the Honorable Judge Ben Brooks.
Left hand on the Bible, raise your right hand. Ready?
Yes.
I, Ben Reynolds.
I, Ben Reynolds.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
So long as I continue a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I am eligible.
That I am eligible.
For the office of City Council, District Four.
For the office of City Council, District Four.
Of the city of Mobile.
Of the city of Mobile.
And will execute the duties of same.
And will execute the duties of same.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
According to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations, Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge Brooks. Thank you to my bride and two little girls. Appreciate y'all giving me the opportunity to serve the people of District Four. I also want to extend a thank you to the former, now, Councilman John Williams for all the support he's provided me and my family over the years. He did a heck of a job for us in District Four, and I hope to do the same. So thank you, Mr. Williams. Today, in the company of my fellow citizens and colleagues alike, I would like to extend my greatest thanks and to direct my appreciativeness specifically to those who have with clear eyes and conscience elected me to this job. I am now a sworn member of the Mobile City Council, duly equipped to take action on your behalf and on behalf of all the citizens of District Four, hired to make the desires and wishes of the citizens known to their government, hired to intervene legislatively on behalf of each and every citizen of District Four when called to do so, hired to find common ground that can be shared and prospered from with our government, hired to be a practical, sensible, hard-working public servant. I'm honored to have the privilege to stand here today to begin this endeavor of elevated participation in the exercise of liberty. Mobile is a rising city and is on the verge of becoming the greatest city in our region. And it is my intent to see to it that we give it our best shot. And I've committed to approach this task with the wisdom, virtue, and zeal required for such a commitment. We can do it, and we are well on our way. We must take the lead of the executive branch while still holding it accountable to the desires of the people. Each and every person sworn in today has been hired for these very same reasons, and I am convinced that we all have common ground that can be shared with one another. And finally, we must all, every one of us, remember that we are neighbors first. Be a good neighbor. Thank you all.
Councilmember-elect Joel Davis and the Honorable Judge George Hardisty Jr.
Councilman Davis, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Joel Davis.
I, Joel Davis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And honestly.
And honestly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office upon which.
Of the office upon which.
I am about to enter.
I am about to enter.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I further solemnly swear.
I further solemnly swear.
That I am eligible.
That I am eligible.
For the office of City Council, District Five.
For the office of City Council, District Five.
And will execute the duties of same.
And will execute the duties of same.
According to the best.
According to the best.
Of my knowledge and ability.
Of my knowledge and ability.
Sincere congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commander. Good morning. I'd like to start off by thanking the citizens of District Five who have, for the third time, elected me to this office. I very much appreciate their confidence and am honored to continue to serve them. I'd also like to thank those, many, many people, who have supported me not only in this most recent election, but in the two that went before it. Without your help and support, I wouldn't be standing here today. And finally, I'd like to support my wife, Stephanie, the long-suffering Stephanie, who, who listens to me when I come home at night, never hesitates to give me her opinion on matters affecting the city of Mobile. Sometimes they're good opinions, sometimes they're not, but I always listen attentively, and she's been very, very helpful to me. Thank you. I'd like to congratulate the mayor on his victory in the municipal election and all of my colleagues on their victories in the municipal election. I look forward to working with the mayor and with the members of the city council for the next four years to move the business of the city of Mobile forward. Over the last four years, excuse me, over the last eight years, every time an issue came before me to vote on, I always asked myself, "What's best for the city of Mobile?" For each and every individual who lives in the city of Mobile, not just what's best for District Five, but what's best for every single person in the city of Mobile. That's what I intend to do for the next four years. Thank you very much.
Councilmember-elect Scott Jones and the Honorable Shelby Hall, Judge Shelby Hall.
Raise your right hand, please. I, Benjamin Scott Jones.
I, Benjamin Scott Jones.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Alabama.
Of the State of Alabama.
So long as I.
So long as I.
Continue a citizen thereof.
Continue a citizen. continue a citizen thereof,
and that I will faithfully and honestly,
and that I will faithfully and honestly,
discharge the duties,
discharge the duties,
of the office,
of the office,
upon which I am,
upon which I am,
about to enter,
about to enter,
to the best,
to the best,
of my ability,
of my ability,
so help me God,
so help me God.
I further solemnly swear,
I further solemnly swear,
that I am eligible,
that I am eligible,
for the office of City Council, District Six,
for the office of City Council, District Six,
of the city of Mobile,
of the city of Mobile,
and will execute,
and will execute,
the duties of same,
the duties of same,
according to the best,
according to the best,
of my knowledge,
of my knowledge,
and ability,
and ability.
Congratulations, Councilman Jones.
Well, I'm obviously not so young with glasses, right? Thank y'all for being here. Give yourselves a round of applause. You are Mobile. Mayor Stimson, Judge Hall, other distinguished guests, friends and family, especially my mom and sister, thank you for being a part of this magnificent day. This is truly an exciting day for my family and me. I would be remiss, I've got to point somebody out. Chester Fagan is a WWII vet that lives in my district that I met very early on. He served off the shores of Iwo Jima. Ninety-six years old. He's been at every event I've ever had. Chester, let's stand and thank you. That is the best our city has to offer. God opened the doors in this campaign like I've never seen him open for us over the course of the last year or so. As we started being approached about this opportunity to serve, there's no doubt that his plan is for us to be right here at this moment in time. Bess, Connie, and Jane were the three district representatives that served before me. Thank you so very much for the faith and trust that you put in me. You leave huge shoes to fill, and I know if I screw this up, they're going to let me know it's because a man is the one that took over. I would literally be standing here for hours to list all of the others by name. There's so many that got us to this point, and all I'm going to say is thank you to each and every one of you. You know who you are, the many hours of work and dedication and commitment to this campaign. It's not me, it's them. Susie, your love, faith, devotion, brains, and unwavering support are some of the main reasons that I stand here today. Thank you for loving me and believing me, not just in this endeavor, but for the last thirty-six years. I know with you by my side that this next chapter will be just as rewarding as the last thirty-five have been. On June the 4th of this year, almost two weeks after I officially entered this race, my dad had a massive heart attack and died before I could make it back to his home. That night, as I said my goodbyes for the final time, I dedicated this campaign to him. Today, I dedicate the next four years to him as I serve as your City Council Representative for District Six. He was one of the wisest men that I knew, and his words will still guide me today and will help me over the next four years. One of the reasons both he and I were successful was because of my mom, Jean Jones, who actually made the drive back here last night from Jacksonville and is just here for that moment in a second. Mom, where are you? Thank you, Mom. On Election Day morning, on the 24th of August, we received a phone call at 2:43 a.m. informing us that Susie's mom, Betty Sue Gaston, longtime employee of Barton Academy, had passed away in her sleep. There's no doubt that she was by far my biggest cheerleader and supporter, and I'm sure that you're up there today with a smile from ear to ear. We did it. One of the generals that I was privileged to serve under, General Colin Powell, said that leadership is solving problems. The day soldiers stop bringing you their problems is the day that you have stopped leading them. They have either lost confidence that you can help or concluded that you do not care. Either case is a failure of leadership. I will be working every day to ensure that I never fail in leading the great people of District Six. You are the reason that I am here, and I promise you that I will not lose sight of that. Mayor Stimson, you were elected in what most reporting agencies called a landslide, and I would agree with that. The people of this city made it clear that they have faith and confidence in the leadership that you have provided and want it to continue. Earl Noddingale once stated that people with goals succeed because they know where they're going. I know that you are a man of vision, and as the past eight years have shown us, you are a man of action, not just a man of words. It has been said that if you want to go somewhere fast, go along. If you want to go somewhere far, go together. I hope that over the course of the next four years, we can say that we went a long way because we worked together. To my colleagues, congratulations on your successes and your swearing-in today. I'm committed to working with each of you every day to make this body a professional organization that people can put their trust, faith, and confidence in believing that we are doing the right things, not only for our districts, but for this city as a whole. It's been said, and we've all heard it, a rising tide lifts all ships. To my constituents in District Six, thank you for believing in me enough to put me in this position to serve you. We have many challenges ahead, and my promise to you is that we will work together to resolve them. Hard work, transparent and honest communication, and quantifiable results will be the norm. As I've said so many times on your doorsteps, I'm thankful that I earned your vote. What I truly desire starting right this second is that I can earn your respect. God bless America and God bless this great city of Mobile, Alabama.
Councilmember-elect Gina Gregory and the Honorable Judge Michael Wyndham.
Ladies and gentlemen, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I give the oath of office. I, Gina Gregory,
I, Gina Gregory,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution,
that I will support the Constitution,
of the United States,
of the United States,
and the Constitution,
and the Constitution,
of the state of Alabama,
of the state of Alabama,
so long as I continue,
so long as I continue,
a citizen thereof,
a citizen thereof,
and that I will faithfully,
and that I will faithfully,
and honestly,
and honestly,
discharge the duties,
discharge the duties,
of the office upon which,
of the office upon which,
I'm about to enter,
I'm about to enter,
to the best of my ability,
to the best of my ability,
so help me God,
so help me God.
and I further solemnly swear,
and I further solemnly swear,
that I am eligible,
that I am eligible,
for the office of,
for the office of,
City Council, District Seven,
City Council, District Seven,
of the city of Mobile,
of the city of Mobile,
and will execute the duties of same,
and will execute the duties of same,
according to the best of my knowledge,
according to the best of my knowledge,
and ability,
and ability.
Congratulations, Gina.
Thank you. Last one. Thank you, everybody, for being here today. I know everyone has already thanked all of their friends and family and supporters, and you all have come from all around the city, all around the county, and certainly from out of town. Thank you all for being here with us today on this occasion. I'm especially grateful to my mom, who you just saw. That's my mom, Jane, who is here with me today, holding the Bible. And of course, all of my very special friends and supporters who have been with me for sixteen-plus years. That's right, sixteen years, gang. I'm the old one in the crowd now. But I really appreciate you all being here today to witness this occasion where we inaugurate this new mayor and this council. You know, family support is so important, and you've seen so many family members here today, but I'm very appreciative of mine. In particular, my husband Todd, who was with me here four times, holding the Bible, but he couldn't be here today, so I'm especially grateful to have my mom here, who has moved to Mobile from Florida. Usually, they're going to Florida. This one came to Mobile. You know, having her living just fifteen minutes away is a true blessing. So I want to thank her for being here with me. She helped on the campaign trail. I'm not sure if she's up for too many more, but she was great. Thank you, Mom. You know, I'm just thankful every day to God for giving me the opportunity to serve, and I pray for his guidance every day. I've been sitting here this morning praying for grace under fire, to calm my heartbeat down a little bit and help me get through this. And you know, as soon as I walked up here, everything was great. You know, on inauguration day, we always try to look ahead, to share our vision for what's to come, and for what we want to take on, and then the challenges that we face. But being the senior member here, I really can't help but reflect back on sixteen years of service, where we came from, where we've been, and where we're going. I also remember William's children. I mean, my goodness, we were talking about this earlier. William was down here, Julia was maybe here, and Morgan was in his arms. Can you believe that? I mean, it's just hard to believe how time flies. But it's so good to see everyone here and to think about where we're going. You know, things have really changed dramatically in our city. The city is in the best financial shape it's been in in recent memory. We have a surplus available. You've heard about the new airport downtown. We've just agreed to spend about thirty million to help build a terminal. That's exciting, both for travelers and for economic development. And the changes that will bring to Mobile are just staggering. District Seven's Langen Park has been the recipient of some of those surplus funds that we have. Thank you, Mayor. We are combining district capital funds with those surplus funds and some grant monies from the BP oil spill to invest millions into this park, that is a beloved park, to bring it back to the gem that it once was. You know, next up, in the Langen Park renovation phase, we'll be completing some design work for some repairs and renovations of the amphitheater. But I think what's most exciting for me is the fact that we are finally going to dredge the lake at Langen Park. If you grew up in Mobile, you might have gone swimming in the lake. You might have fished. If you look at it today, you'd think, whoever went swimming in that lake? Well, a lot of people did, and we are getting ready to dredge that lake where we can put boats back on Langen Park, and I'm so excited about that. All of these projects, though, that and a few others that we have to finish up at Langen are ongoing, and I really hope that we can get those finished in two to three years. Hopefully, Mayor, by the end of this term. Ziegler Boulevard, yeah, we're hoping by the end of this term at least. Ziegler Boulevard is also undergoing a long-awaited widening process. You know, it's been on the books for twenty years. I've had people come to my district meetings and say, Gina, you know, I just don't believe that road's going to be widened in my lifetime. I had to look at the gentleman who always said that and say, you know what? You might be right. I'm waiting on that, too. I hope it's widened within my lifetime, and here it is. We are widening Ziegler Boulevard. It should be done within the next year and a half, two years, and we're getting ready to open the first phase from Cody to Schillinger. That's where we started. It's getting ready to open within the first one hundred days. Hard to believe. I want to thank everyone for the council that I have been working with, John Williams, of course, who was here with us today, to work on earmarking the one cent sales tax money for our capital improvement program. That has been one of the best decisions that we have ever made. When you look around the city and you see the progress that we have made, I think people kind of forget the fact that we had to raise the tax to do it because you're seeing the results of that tax money. It is out there in the orange cones every day, and the resurfacing, and the street striping, and the drainage ditches that we clear up every day. We'll continue working with the CIP. Thank you to my colleagues, both past and present, who I know will continue this wonderful project. In District Seven alone, we've done all the things that you would expect and then some, from resurfacing streets to building miles of new sidewalks and repairing others, to putting millions of dollars into drainage and cleaning out ditches. And just know that these projects will continue every day throughout the next four years. But now it's time to tackle some improving other amenities that we've been looking at and talking about for some time, especially for seniors. My goal in the next four years is to work with the mayor and his administration to improve the amenities for our seniors in the district in the northwest section of the city to bring them better amenities. As our population ages, we need to update and improve what we do for our seniors. And we have a terrific senior center, recreation center, in Hillsdale, and we need to look at that area, that footprint, for making these major improvements. To better fund and reorganize and recognize amenities in that Langen Park footprint, I'm really looking to bring the discussions we've had to fruition where we bring everybody together to better promote, better fund, and recognize everything out there, from the tennis center to the museum, to the ball fields, to the park. We need to do a better job of promoting that area and bringing tourists to West Mobile. If David Clark is here, David, I hope your ears are burning because we will be working with you on how to make that happen. While there's been much progress in the city and certainly in our district, this mayor and this council face challenges, but I don't really want to call them challenges as much as opportunities that we can look forward to taking on. How to grow our city through both infill and expanding our borders. How to stem the tide of those folks who are leaving Mobile, and how to better provide some sort of incentive to get people to stay, and those who are moving into the area to buy homes here in Mobile rather than going across the bay or somewhere out in the county. You know, another challenge, but I want to call it an opportunity, of course, is how to support commercial growth in the city while at the same time maintaining and preserving our neighborhoods. We have to sustain our neighborhoods. That's the only way we'll get people to move into our neighborhoods. We all do this by uniting. You've heard a lot about uniting today, but that's what it takes. It takes uniting as a team with this goal in mind to bring it to fruition. Of course, getting there is always different. You know, we all have differences of opinion sometimes on how we exactly get there, but the goal is to get there and to work together to make it happen, and I am confident that we'll be able to do that. During my tenure here, I've had the privilege of working with dedicated volunteers in District Seven in our community action groups, in our neighborhood associations, and other community groups. We've worked on a variety of projects, resolving many issues, and making a lot of positive changes in our district. I'm very proud of those relationships I've built through the work and the achievements that we have made as a community. You know, sixteen years ago, when I first took this podium, I stood here to take the very first oath of office, and I was excited. I was nervous and tremendously honored. I'm still that way today, still a little nervous, still a little, you know, nervous about what's happening, but I'm also very exciting, very excited, exciting, excited, and honored to still be here today. I want to thank you all for your votes, your support, for being here with me today. I see so many friends, Connie, who I served with, thank you. So many friends and supporters who were sitting here today. Ben, served with you, too. Goodness, looking around, it's like, who am I going to leave out from who I have served with in the past? John, of course, I mentioned. But thank you all for being here. It means so much to us to have you here with us, to support us as we begin this new chapter. And for the people in District Seven, just remember, I am your advocate. I am your voice in District Seven. Thank you.
Counsel, I want to nominate our city clerk to be the temporary chair of this meeting.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Madam Clerk.
At this time, we'll begin the organizational meeting of the Mobile City Council, Monday, November 1st, 2021. Roll call, Councilmember Penn...
Here.
Councilmember Carroll...
Here.
Councilmember Small...
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds...
Here.
Councilmember Dave...
Here.
Councilmember Jones...
Here.
Councilmember Gregory...
Here.
Adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance is being introduced for the first time, 03037.
Madam Chair, I move that the council ratify and continue utilizing the current council rules of procedure set forth in Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 2 of the Mobile City Code.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 03037, ordinance establishing the rules of procedure for the mayor-council form of government of the City of Mobile.
So moved.
We just did, took that one.
We just did that.
We, he just moved, he made a motion to put it on the floor, and now we have to vote on it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Resolution is being introduced for the first time, 02980 through 03981.
Madam Chair, I move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of Item 02980 and 09981.
03981.
It's three. Sorry, didn't have my glasses on.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 02980, resolution to elect president and vice president of the Mobile City Council. At this time, we'll need a nomination.
Madam Chair...
Yes, sir.
I nominate CJ Small as president and Gina Gregory as vice president.
Second.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. We have a motion and a second. All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Resolution 03981, resolution appointing the attorney for the City of Mobile.
Madam Chair...
Yes, sir.
I nominate Chris Arledge and the Atchison Firm.
Second.
Any other nominations? See none, nominations are closed. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. And so we have the Atchison Firm. That concludes our business meeting and announcements. Any announcements?
Madam Clerk...
Yes.
I would like to thank my colleagues on the council for nominating me as the president of this council. And I promise you that I will represent this council to the best of my ability. And also, William and myself have been some bad members of Capa Fasada. Then we thank everybody else of our fraternity. But we'd like to thank our fraternity, Capa Fasada, for coming out on this morning and supporting the power of our elected. Get him to stand up. Brothers, would y'all stand up if y'all in the audience today?
There was a few of us stood up out there.
There's quite a few of us. Why didn't you stand up, Mr. Public Safety Director? You are a member. Also, I'd like to say congratulations also to the vice president, and I'm looking forward to working with you, Mr. Mayor, and your administration to help the Mobile City forward. And also, our city clerk and her staff, we're looking to work with you all for the next four years. Thank you all so much for the past years, and thank you in advance for the next four years.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to announce to our friends and families that are here that we will have light refreshments outside in the atrium immediately following this meeting, and we'll see our new councilmembers at 2 o'clock on the ninth floor.
Madam Chair, before we go, can we get a quick photo of the new council?
Yes.
Todd?
Let's go ahead and...
Gina's going to sit next to you.
Yeah.
Gina.
Gina will be on the left. Gina will be on the left. She is on the left. Yeah, she's on the left. Gina's on the left. She'll be on the left. Well, go by years, so be it. You've been, what, sixteen years, fifteen? Just take the chair up. You want to take one seated or you want to take one stand up?
We'll take one seated and then...
You can take one.
We'd like to get the mayor to come stand up.
Let's just take one first. Let's stand in front of the chairs. Pull those back.
Do we have any more announcements from the council? An announcement from the administration? Can I get a motion from the council to adjourn? May I properly move in a second that we adjourn in a discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? This meeting is adjourned.